Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have a form.
The Journal of the Meeting of February 18th, 2020 has not yet been finalized. We will move on to bid openings. We have no bid openings today, this afternoon, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this afternoon, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one, First District.
Receive file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth District.
Receive file and the replacement letter of credit and deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, First District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number ten, Second District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number eleven, Second District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number twelve, Third District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number thirteen, Fourth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number fourteen, Sixth District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number fifteen.
Receive file, hold on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole. Same motion for item number sixteen, and that will be the order.
Item number seventeen.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number eighteen, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under Other Communications, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive file and refer to the county council.
So ordered. Report to the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good afternoon, everyone. Over the past few weeks, there's been a lot of attention on the selection process for the contract for phone services at the Justice Center. We are confident that the best bid won the contract. Before you vote on it tonight, and before we release any documents related to the process, I want to be clear on a couple of things. First, the contract is one example of how we have changed the rules in St. Louis County government. Under the old rules, county government and private businesses profited from the inmates. County contracts went to campaign contributors, whether or not they could even do the job. And the truth did not matter. We are operating under new rules. Number one, we treat everyone, including inmates, with dignity and respect. County government will no longer seek to make a profit off of inmate phone calls, but will instead prioritize the ability of inmates to get out of an incarcerated setting and get back on their feet. Number two, county contracts go to the best bid, regardless of the bidder's politics, and with no political manipulation. After setting the vision for what the general priority should be, nobody in my office manipulated or interfered with the RFP process whatsoever. And number three, we value the truth. We value integrity, and when the integrity of the RFP process is threatened by people who distort the truth, we will act appropriately to correct the record. And we're starting to get recognition for this RFP. On February 7th, the Prison Policy Institute, a nonprofit criminal justice reform organization, published an article about best practices for phone RFPs. And guess whose RFP they quoted and referenced as the best practice? That's right, St. Louis County's. So we should be proud of the work our procurement office did on this contract. We should be proud of the values and principles that this contract represents, and we should be proud of the new rules that made it possible for us to be considered a national model. In the RFP for this contract, it was highlighted, "Selected vendors should be aware the county takes the economic interests of families and inmates seriously and may regard an overcharge as a material breach of contract." The current vendor, who has been providing service on an expired contract, did not clearly state in a bid for the current contract that a $3 charge would be assessed each time more money was put onto the phone account of the inmate. It's akin to getting a charge, a user fee, each time you withdraw money from an ATM. However, this is not predatory to the inmates in our care. That predatory behavior was noted by those in the government and the procurement process in our county government, and it was a part of the scoring. One important lesson we learned from fighting Steve Stinger over the years was that you shake the foundations of the old way. Those who profited under the old rules bite back. They elbow, they push, they do whatever they have to do, the truth be damned. And let's be honest here, the prison profiteers do not like our new approach. They want us to stick to the status quo. They know that if too many other governments follow our lead, the profits they make off the inmates will shrink. But you know what? That's exactly what we want, because that's the right thing to do. The county will get no cuts from the profit of the new phone contract. That means about $900,000 less coming into our general fund. But it's the right thing to do, ensuring that lower phone fees are charged to those in our care so they can stay in touch with their loved ones, and they can have a better chance at success once they leave our custody. A couple of other quick notes. Over the weekend, we learned that St. Louis County government was recognized as one of the best places in the region for women to work. This was the first time we received this honor, ever. It's a result of work done by the women in the Workplace Working Group that I convened shortly after taking office. That working group led us to adopt new paid family leave, increase the minimum wage for county workers, and to be more thoughtful about how our employee policies impact all of our employees. We thank the Women's Foundation of Greater St. Louis for this honor, and we will continue to work to make sure that St. Louis County is a great place to work for everyone. Yesterday, we announced that Narcan will now be available through our Health Department in Berkeley, with plans to distribute to our other two health departments later in the year. Opioid addiction has hit our African-American population hard. That's why we chose to make this announcement at the Berkeley Center. This is a national epidemic, and we must do everything we can to fight it. Also yesterday, the Senate passed out of committee a bill to create a statewide prescription drug monitoring program. Missouri remains the only state without one. In 2017, St. Louis County launched a program, and it now covers the majority of the state of Missouri. This legislation must be passed if Jefferson City is serious about fighting the opioid epidemic. Tomorrow, a House committee will hold a hearing on tax credits for domestic violence shelters. Domestic violence is also an epidemic, and we must look at new ways to fund shelters and get victims the help that they need. Before this bill is counselled, they would ban domestic abusers from carrying concealed firearms. This is a common sense ordinance that will bring us in line with federal law. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. There is no report of special committees. We will move on to public forum. This evening, we have, this afternoon, we have 10 speakers. When you are called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. We do have a three-minute time limit. I will, there will be a reminder from the clerk when the end of your time is complete. And I would also ask to, like to remind folks in the gallery to please hold your applause. It makes it very difficult for us to hear the next speaker's name being called, and if there are repeated violations of that, you may be escorted out. First speaker, please.
First speaker, Tim McAtier.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim McAtier from IC Solutions. As I have previously stated, IC Solutions submitted two offers, one that had fees for using a credit card, that was known as Option B, and one that had no fees, known as Option A. With the release of the records today, we look forward in reviewing how our No Fee Option A was evaluated and scored, especially given that the committee ultimately selected a No Fee option. I brought with me today our Option A, which was no fees, it had no fees, for your review and evaluation. I also did a comparison with the selected vendor's offer. As you will see for yourself in looking at this offer, everything I have claimed regarding ICS No Fee option, including that it is substantially lower in cost than the selected offer, is both accurate and factual. This despite recent comments in the media incorrectly implying otherwise. Based upon these comments, we think it is possible that our Option A was not even evaluated in the award selection. As you may recall, County Purchasing previously requested a best and final offer despite no seemingly valid reason for doing so. They specifically instructed our company on multiple occasions to provide only an offer that included fees and not to include an offer on our No Fee option. So in compliance with their instruction, ICS submitted a best and final offer for its Fee Option B, but we also included and stated with that submission that our No Fee Option A was still valid, and it is still valid. In compliance, despite contrasting instructions to ICS during the BAFO process, County Purchasing then awarded to a No Fee option, which has calling rates over three times higher in cost than ICS's Option A, which is included in the information I'm going to provide to the clerk. If our Option A was not evaluated and scored, and based upon the specific requirements from County Purchasing with regard to the best and final offer, we can only conclude that the best and final process was used to remove Option A and not have to score it because it's so much lower than the selected provider that it's virtually impossible to have selected that offer. I sincerely hope this is not the case, but because it is, if it is, it presents significant issues, not the least of which it's not in the best interest of the county or the inmates and their families that are paying the cost of these phone services, and such action would never hold up in court. I thank you for your time, and all I ask for you, council members, is to review our Option A offer, which I'm leaving behind with the clerk, to ensure that it was in fact evaluated and scored in the final selection, and that it is part of the record that you released today. If it was not considered and scored as part of-
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Please wrap up, sir.
If it was not selected, you must find out why it was and always has been a valid offer. Thank you.
Next speaker, Rachel Major.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rachel Major, Representative for the Police Staff. And as the Prop key conversation continues to affect our CBA, I've been getting more frustrated. You all had great questions yesterday at the committee, the whole meeting, but the answers you were given by the Budget Office were half truths with omissions of details that did not clearly address the issue at hand. Not one to beat around any bush, I'm going to provide you with some plain information. To start, our contract was not intended to be a two-year contract. It was written as a three-year contract in the spring of 2018. After a remarkable amount of significant delays, we have finally gotten to your doorsteps. Our contract will only affect, adjust the Prop key budget in 2020 and 2021. Our contract is a standalone request for funding, and unlike the officer's contract, it does not continue to increase in cost beyond the end of its term. There is no matrix, there are no steps. Only part of our contract will be paid out of the Public Safety Fund. The Budget Director failed to notify any of you that a portion of the contract cost is annually funded by the Emergency Communications Network Fund. I have provided you with copies of the decompression plan that was agreed to for our CBA, and that document should answer a multitude of your questions about percentages, costs, and comparisons. From the padding of the Prop key budget for the extra 15 new officers that holds on to over $3.7 million of just-in-case planning, to ignoring the option available with the approximately $2.5 million in the police budget each year that is not getting used, that no one ever talks about, "We might hire more people" only sounds like a good excuse until you read that the actual spending in that category always reflects that margin. As you were concerned about yesterday, wages are indeed a relatively fixed expense for Prop P, all the more reason that we should stop spending Prop P money on expenses that aren't fixed unless there's a dire need. Last year's police budget for police vehicles was zero. Last year's police budget for equipment was only $249,000. Just last month, the approved computer equipment for the police department cost more money in 2020 than our contract would have. Don't you wish you'd seen that contract in October, when it was ratified and ready for you? The stage was set to put you all in this position long before you started asking questions. The scales were quickly balanced when you did, to reflect a picture of gloom and doom. We don't want to break the bank any more than you do. There is quite a lot of work done to balance the increases needed for wages to ensure responsible spending of the taxpayers' money. Supplanting, estimating, inflating are all practices that are going on in this conversation, and yesterday's failure by the Budget Office to not even provide accurate funding source information is simply negligence. Strong wording, yes, but the time has come for strength and advocacy for the staff. Does not commission or not essential mean not important? Please do not reinforce a belief developed in a culture of a predominantly female workforce to know your place. Today, with a staff population that is still two-thirds female-
Madam Chair, that's-
-we are no longer willing to accept what we're told blindly without asking questions. So here I am, once again, standing before you with the knowledge that if you want to approve this contract, you can and you will. The money is there, the support from our community is there. This has literally come down to each of you in your answer to the question, do you support the entire police department? Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Christine Hassel.
Hi, I'm Christine Hassel. I'm from South St. Louis County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. Two words have jumped out at me after attending previous council meetings: accountability and transparency. They're closely related. A host of people raising different issues point to a lack of these two qualities. The series of inmate deaths at the county jail and the callous manner in which surviving relatives have been treated is one example. The previous poor administration of the Animal Care and Control Department is another case. Hundreds of dogs and cats were needlessly euthanized and subjected to miserable living conditions. In the past month, we've seen a large legal settlement awarded to a police officer who suffered blatant discrimination based on his sexual preferences. All these situations sprang from people in charge who felt that they could do as they chose just because they wouldn't be held accountable. So I find it alarming that the attitude still prevails. Now we find out that the county Executive's Chief of Staff last year lobbied for a firm that the administration now wants to award a public contract. I'm sorry, but that gives the appearance of a conflict of interest, and it's why there are numerous laws addressing this as a form of corruption. Even if this contract was scored properly, which is questionable, the entire set of circumstances raises questions about whether this was handled in a fair and equitable manner. I'm thankful for the people on this council who are willing to ask questions. Where is Proposition P money going? What are the relationships between contractors and members of this administration? As long as there are public questions, hopefully there will be public answers. With the decision to move meeting times to 1:00 PM for 25% of these meetings, we're going in the wrong direction. Doing something just because you can doesn't make it right or good. It didn't in the previous case, as I've mentioned, and it won't do so in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker, Tim Hassel.
My name is Tim Hassel. I'm a resident of South County. I was disappointed in the council's action a few weeks ago to vote down the pro-life resolution that was presented to you. When one woman becomes pregnant, that is a baby in her womb. That baby is a person, all the rights of any other person alive today. Those of us in the pro-life movement are the voice for those who cannot speak for themselves. When you look at this issue, it's really a social justice issue. Justice is nothing more than giving somewhat, than giving somewhat, giving to them what is due to them. At the most basic level, every person has a right to life. Thank you.
Next speaker, Juanita Bradford.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Juanita Bradford, and I'm from St. Louis County. Westgate Branson Wood is a business that's in Branson that sold me a bogus property. They sold me something that did not exist, and it was closed at the time that they sold it to me. They're engaged in unlawful practices and predatory in nature. The building I was sold was closed since 2008. They sold it to me in 2013. It's basically swamp land. It was a bait and switch, and it's theft. They said it's dangerous to travel to the building. They sold me usage, and they have no warning signs protecting people about the dangers of traveling to the property. And as recent as January, I was told that some people have been stuck down in that location. I've complained to the Attorney General, and they are not doing anything about this. And this is our right to engage in commerce with full and honest disclosure and our rights to safety. If we do nothing, if we turn our heads, we are condoning the behavior, and lawless businessmen will be emboldened. My statute's in this week, and I need help to hold this business accountable for its fraudulent and unfair practices. If Missouri is serious about protecting its citizens, then it cannot turn its head when it's alerted that a business is committing a crime just because they're not aware of how many people are affected. Thank you for your time. I'm asking for help. My statute's in this week, and this business needs to be held accountable because this is really about safety, and it's about commerce and our right to have property. Thank you.
Next speaker, Andrea Bowman.
Good afternoon. My name's Andrea Bowman, and I am a resident of St. Louis County. I'm here as a voice for the animals at the St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. My husband and I volunteered there for over a couple of years. We haven't volunteered there for a little more than a year, but we have continued to follow the goings-on of that and the turmoil that's been going on for months and months and months and months. We left there, it was a hard decision to make, for several reasons. We were there during the turmoil of the former director that now is gone and apparently, I guess, left the state, I don't know. So that is a good thing, in my opinion. But these animals deserve stability. It's hard enough for them to be there, out of their homes or wherever they were. They deserve stability, love, warmth, and I think that the volunteers at this facility, even though we aren't one of them any longer, are the backbone of that place and an integral part of it. I don't understand, and maybe you all can help me, why we can't have an onsite vet rather than people that come and go. I think that would be one thing that, I don't know the reason why. Hopefully that can be fixed. I don't know. Anyway, that is what I wanted to say. I, myself and many others, would really like to know where we're headed with this facility. Again, we care for the animals. They have no voice, so we're here as their voice, and thank you.
Next speaker, Isora Liggins.
Good afternoon. Isora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I would like first to know, how do I access the May 29, 2018 Journal? In the past, I could go online, and I could locate it. I tried to locate it today, and I noticed that the Journal is there, but the public forum text is gone. So my question is, is there a reason why the text has been removed, or am I accessing it from the wrong context? Next, I feel discriminated against based upon my race and sex. I have filed suit against Edward McGee in 2018 for his personal actions that brought harm to me. St. Louis County Counselor's Office entered its appearance on behalf of Edward McGee. I would like to note for the record that under the Stinger administration, Peter Crane's Council Counselor's Office was not willing to perjure themselves and compromise the integrity of the office, like the Page administration. Ms. Beth O'Rourke's County Counselor's Office is willing to file false pleadings and perjury testimony. The handout is a copy of a docket and the roadmap of the case and the course that I alleged took in the trial de novo. I am currently waiting on the audio. I would like to request the court clerk who input this docket to come before this council and explain what it contains. There was no trial de novo, and I am requesting a full refund. Justice must give the appearance of justice. A criminal investigation should be opened up for Judge Baker knowingly and improperly granting the February 13, 2020 order based on perjury testimony and false pleadings rising to obstruction of justice by way of his court orders and judicial misconduct. Mr. Page, the oppression demonstrated by Judge Baker, I believe, was sanctioned by your office. In the recent case that the county agreed to pay $10 million to the gay officer, Dr. Page, you was outraged, and you stated in an article, "I have a general rule that I don't manage departments," but this is an ongoing exception. You have also been understanding in how the animals in St. Louis County were treated with the recent settlement for $750,000 when a dog was accidentally killed. Dr. Page, but for me, an African-American, senior, disabled, female, county resident only trying to get matters regarding her workers' compensation and disability matters corrected, you have done everything possible-
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
...to ensure I do not get my benefits or due process as you are charged to ensure to every county resident. You are clearly discriminating against me. Thank you.
Next speaker, Xena Hackworth.
Every January, I go to the March for Life in Washington, DC. I know that abortion, and you all know by now because I've been up here every week since then, but I know that abortion disproportionately affects the black community. But there are other reasons why I support the life issue as well. While Lisa Clancy and her squad are celebrating abortion, we in the pro-life movement are on the other end. We are the ones, when women come out of those abortion clinics and they are hurt and broken, we're there to pick up the pieces. While human traffickers are bringing women into those abortion clinics and Lisa Clancy and her squad-
Chairwoman.
And you work for the council, you work for the people. And Lisa Clancy and her- The other thing I want to say too is that we, as, you know, I personally and my family, we support the police and we will always, and we hope that our council will do the same. We are a free people. The council actually works for the people. Everyone up here who has been elected, they work for us and we can applaud if we want to. You are not the queen, Lisa Clancy. You are the chairwoman, not the queen. You work for people. My family had a business in New York and they did not let their employees tell them what they could and cannot do. We are the people. We are the ones who elected everyone here and we are the ones who have the say. So we are not here to make you comfortable. You work for us and you need to remember that because as quickly as we hired you, we can fire you as well. So the people need to understand, we can clap if we want to because there's nothing wrong with doing that. And yes, I clap for the police officers because I support them and I don't support people who try to tell us that we can't show our appreciation for the police officers or anyone else who comes up here and supports what we support.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
I am saying again, this council should reject the agreement for the expansion of the convention center in downtown St. Louis at a cost of $480 million. $240 million would come from St. Louis County. Years ago, county voters were made all kinds of promises about the dome and how it would provide so many benefits. None of the promises turned out to be true. The city is more broke than ever and county finances are struggling. There is no reason to believe an expanded convention center would do any better. It's hard not to notice that arguments made for the, made for the expansion are the same as for keeping the loop trolley going. The trolley was not getting much business with two trolley cars, but the trolley people claim a third car would cause a big increase in riders. People at the Convention and Business Bureau claim convention business is down, but a bigger convention center would bring more business. Neither argument makes any sense. St. Louis County has been in decline for a number of years. People, jobs, and revenue have left in record numbers. In the first decade of the new century, there was a loss of 88,000 jobs. This was due to unusual circumstances, but is still a staggering number. The 2001 Buzz Westphal warned that the county was experiencing the same kind of problems as the city, that if not addressed, they would only get worse. He has been proven right. Deteriorated neighborhoods, crime, some terrible school districts, and taxes being continually piled on have caused many to head to St. Charles, Jefferson County, and other outlying counties. These counties continue to experience growth while St. Louis County declines. Two years after Buzz Westphal issued his warning he would die in office and Charlie Dooley became county executive, one of the first things the new county executive did was support a subsidy for the St. Louis Cardinals' new baseball stadium at a cost of $110 million. The stadium would have been built with or without the council subsidy. Warning by Buzz Westphal continued to be ignored. In 2004, a study by the University of Missouri found a quote "wage drain" in St. Louis County. Middle-class families were moving out and taking tens of millions of dollars of buying power with them. Yet county government continued to spend huge amounts of tax dollars foolishly and continues to do so. Now it is $240 million for an expanded convention center in downtown St. Louis while so many problems are ignored in St. Louis County. Last year on September 1st, there was a front-page story in the Post Dispatch about all the problems in Pine Lawn. The city was broken, having a tough time paying its bills. A third of the residents lived below the poverty line. What was the response from county executive Sam Page? Not one word. What about you, Ms. Clancy? You have gone on about social justice and racial equality, but not a word of concern from you either. Now many members of this council want to ignore problems in impoverished cities in the county and hand out $240 million of what is essentially corporate welfare. Last of all, I think Councilwoman Dunaway could have a conflict of interest in this issue as she works for Brian Cave. The law firm has been involved with many aspects of the dome, the convention center, and related matters and assume they still are.
Final speaker, Lisa Pennet.
Hi, Lisa Pennet, St. Louis County. I just want to first talk about one of the other speakers that came up and they talked about free communication for inmates. Is this true? Like, we didn't accept a bid for communication that's free? I mean, I think everybody in this council would like to know that, right? Like, did that happen? The second thing that you said, county executive Page, domestic violence is an epidemic in St. Louis County. So you stated, I believe it was last week, about the coronavirus, how, you know, this is an epidemic, right? With the coronavirus, I think you could say worldwide. But I don't think that this actually meets the definition of an epidemic. So if you look up the definition of an epidemic, I don't think this actually does. I think that's kind of like hyperbole and fear and, in a way, probably just to spend money and grow government, that doesn't really meet this definition. It just sounds good and, I mean, I'm here to help them, but I'm always helping people all the time, politically on either side, it doesn't matter. I'm here to help the people. And, you know, as far as that goes, I really do miss, you know, some other members that have been on the council because, like Hazel Erby, she was great about that. Like, she didn't play politics, she actually cared about the people and I see that sometimes that's missing. So I really miss her. Getting rid of the vagrancy laws, that's not a solution. Some other members have mentioned just a volunteers' task force that they would do for free. I think that's a great solution. I think you should look into that. Again, if we really care about what's going on with the homeless, reinstating Larry Rice would be one of the best solutions. I mean, he was doing it for free, on his own dime, you know, just with contributions that he received himself and he was doing a good job. And as a matter of fact, I'll say again, that government actually strangled him so they wouldn't even allow him to bring in porta-potties and things that he needed to meet the needs of the homeless. And by the way, he's about training them up. He's about training up the homeless into skill sets. And again, I think there's a fear of some members of this council of, you know, African-Americans actually excelling. I'd love to see that. I've worked over in East St. Louis with groups of people, you know, on the other side of political spectrum, that I'd love to see them excel. I don't see that here. I see just political motivations that are not based in reality or really wanting to help people out. Lastly, you know, we've talked a lot about that pro-life resolution. I'm a big pro-lifer myself. I love life. I love life across the board.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
Please finish your remarks, ma'am. But I don't, I don't expect anyone that does not acknowledge Jesus Christ and takes their oath on the Dr. Seuss book to understand that or stand up for that resolution. Thank you.
That concludes public forums. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 57, introduced by council member Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $3,000 from the United States Food and Drug Administration, appropriating the same for supportive training for the FDA Retail Standards Grant Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 58, introduced by council member Clancy. An ordinance appropriating and setting apart the amount of $1,450,475 from the unappropriated balances of various funds for supportive projects not completed in 2019. Bill number 59, introduced by council member Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Unique Security, Inc. for upgrades to various security electronics at the county jail. Bill number 61, introduced by council member Walton Gray. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with H&amp;Y Corporation for lease of space at 3801 Bale Avenue for a police precinct substation. Bill number 62, introduced by council member Clancy. An ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $559,777 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for expenses related to opening an additional public safety dispatch channel and nine additional staff members to perform public safety dispatch-related responsibilities. Bill number 63, introduced by council member Fitch. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Village of Twin Oaks, Missouri for the provision of St. Louis County of services related to enforcement of the Village of Twin Oaks zoning ordinance. Bill number 64, introduced by council member Dunaway. An ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended traffic code by deleting one provision from Schedule 9 and by enacting and adding one provision to Schedule 9. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Moving on to perfection. Bill number 20, introduced by council member Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 385, introduced by council member Dunaway. Please hold. Substitute bill 1 for bill number 385. Substitute bill 1 for bill number 385 is held. Bill number 5, introduced by council members Fitch, Tricus, and Harder.
This is the bill that would allow the citizens of St. Louis County to vote on whether or not they want to ban automated enforcement. There is a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for March 10th at 4:00 PM and we'll discuss this in detail, March 10th. So I have moved to hold.
We are still working on scheduling the hearing, Councilman Fitch, as you know. I'm not sure that we have anything finalized for March 10th yet, but I will let you know as soon as that hearing is finalized. As you know, it will be sometime in March. Bill number 5 is held.
Just so you know, that's, we got that from your staff.
There must have been some sort of breakdown in communication and we will work on that. Thank you.
That's where it came from. So it's not going to be March 10th for sure?
I'm not going to say for certain yet. There's a couple of things that we are juggling, but we will continue to work with your office to get it scheduled and make sure you can be in attendance.
Thank you.
Bill number 32, introduced by council member Tricus.
Please hold, bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held. Bill number 36, introduced by council member Fitch.
Please hold, bill 36.
Bill number 36 is held. Bill number 43, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 45. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 45 is perfected. Bill number 46, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 46.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 46 is perfected. Bill number 47, introduced by council member Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 47. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 47 is perfected. Bill number 48, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 48.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Bill number 49 is perfected. Bill number 49, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 49. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Bill number 49 is perfected. Bill number 50, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 50.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 50 is perfected. Bill number 51, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 51.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 51 is perfected. Bill number 52, introduced by council member Dunaway. I move to perfect bill number 52.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 52 is perfected. Bill number 47, introduced by council member Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 47. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 47 is perfected. Bill number 48, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 48.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 48 is perfected. Bill number 49, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 49.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Bill number 49 is perfected. Bill number 50, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 50.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 50 is perfected. Bill number 51, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 51.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 51 is perfected. Bill number 52, introduced by council member Dunaway. I move to perfect bill number 52.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 52 is perfected. Bill number 53, introduced by council member Tricus.
Move to perfect bill number 53. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 53 is perfected. Bill number 54, introduced by council member Tricus.
Move to perfect bill number 54. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 54 is perfected.
Madam Chair, I'd like to abstain on both of those bills, please. 53 and 54.
Can the clerk please record that? Thank you.
And the reason being, so everybody knows, I used to work for McBride, so I don't want to have a conflict.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for disclosing that.
Bill number 55, introduced by council member Clancy. I move to perfect bill number 55.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Tricus.
Thank you. Discussion before the vote, I'm going to request that we have a committee of the whole with respect to this bill. I think Mr. Sullivan adequately addressed the concerns. I certainly have, as well as others, so I think a committee of the whole is proper when we're talking about $15 million. So I'd ask that we have a committee of the whole before this bill proceed further.
Second.
I will consider hosting a committee of the whole about this matter. I do think, though, that we can proceed with perfection tonight or this afternoon.
That defeats the whole purpose. The idea is that a committee of the whole, we may well have reasons to substitute this bill. So I think the idea is to have the committee of the whole before we proceed further with it.
We do have opportunities, as you know, to substitute the bill before it is finally passed and we will still have some time to do that. We'll proceed with the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Roll call. Councilmember Daze? Aye. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
I vote no because Councilman Tricus was not given a chance to have a committee of the whole.
That was my purpose as well.
Yes, we can still have a committee of the whole. The motion carries. Bill number 55 is perfected. Bill number 56, introduced by council member Harder.
I would like to perfect bill number 56. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 56 is perfected. Final passage. Bill number 320, introduced by council member Clancy. Bill number 320 is held. Bill number 14, introduced by council members Tricus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Please hold, bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held. Bill number 29, introduced by council members Clancy, Daze, Dunaway, and Walton Gray.
Madam Chair, woman, I would like to make a statement before the vote.
Okay. I have not announced yet what we will be doing with this. I move for final passage of bill number 29.
Second.
Councilman Harder, would you like to say something?
Thank you. Before I cast my vote, I need to say a couple of things. I would like to thank the chairwoman for having a hearing on this bill last week and I think some new issues came out and things were uncovered at that meeting. I firmly believe that the family is the foundation of all society and government is built on that. The breaking up of families is damaging to our communities and the violence in our homes and our children and spouses must stop. No responsible gun owner wants abusers to have guns. No responsible gun owner wants abusers, period. While I hear the cry for help, I fear this bill does not go, really, is not really the answer to the question at hand. If we're going to tackle domestic violence in St. Louis County, and we should, this does not go near far enough to act as a deterrent to domestic violence. This bill is flawed, well-intentioned, but flawed. The potential unintended consequences can be damaging to the very people it seeks to protect. I'm willing to work on a more robust and more substantial effort to act as a deterrent for domestic violence. I would encourage the authors of this bill to ride along with the police and see how this bill will or will not be enforced. Because of the way this bill is written, there are some serious flaws, in my opinion, to this ordinance. So with that on this bill, I have to vote no.
Councilman Tricus.
As the council knows, I sent a memorandum to the county councillor's office yesterday. It was on the add-on agenda. We received a memorandum back from the county councillor's office today, disagreeing with my interpretation, and I respectfully disagree with Mr. Schuman's research in what had to be, frankly, a pretty cursory review. In any case, I agree with Councilman Harder. This bill overreaches, is not well thought out, and I believe it violates state law, and at a minimum, we need to have some more study done with respect to whether or not what we're, what you're proposing to pass will even successfully survive a legal challenge. So for those reasons, as well as my belief that this encroaches on the Second Amendment, I'm not making light of the issue, but if we're going to do it, let's do it right. So my vote will be no.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. For those in the audience that don't know what this bill does, basically what it does is it prohibits people that have been convicted of a domestic violence charge, domestic violence offense, and/or have an ex parte or full or protection against them. One of the things I've heard the county executives say is the murder that was in Fenton, that was in my neighborhood, where a guy went to his estranged wife's house and shot and killed her father, that if we had something like this in place, it might have stopped that from happening. And I will tell you that that is absolutely not true at all. So put yourself, basically what we want to do, if this passes, we will take a federal felony charge and make it an ordinance violation. That's what it will do. So right now, when a police officer stops someone, they have a firearm, and they have a conviction for domestic violence, they can be arrested and charged in the federal system with a felony. And I'm sure Ms. Orway could probably tell you the range of a felony in the federal system for a firearms offense. Could you help us with that?
This is, this is an opportunity for the council to meet.
I will tell you, it's up to 10 years. It's up to 10 years, is what it is. So we're going to take something that you can get convicted for and get a 10-year sentence and make it an ordinance violation, which is basically a ticket. It's less than a speeding ticket. That's what this bill does. That's what this ordinance does. I appreciate the county executive saying that it mirrors and brings us in line with federal law. It does not. Actually, it's the complete opposite. The penalties are much different. Absolutely different. So is that what we want to do as a community and tell domestic violence suspects, we're going to charge you with an ordinance violation instead of a federal felony? I just think it's the wrong way to go. It's going the opposite direction. While it may look good on a campaign brochure or during a press conference soon to be held, it does not fix the problem. So when it comes to me, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Councilman Dunaway.
I think what Councilmember Fitch is, of all of his comments, the key word is "can." Yes, this would make an ordinance that doesn't have the same penalties as a federal crime. The problem is, is that these particular federal crimes do not get prosecuted. Because of all the cases that run across the U.S. Attorney's Desk, this is not one that does or will take priority. They're too busy with much bigger issues. If we can hand this law over to the county government, it is more likely to be prosecuted than it's going to be by federal prosecutors. And I agree with all of you, this doesn't go far enough. But we are completely hamstrung by what our legislation, by what our legislators in Jeff City are doing to uphold the Second Amendment, and there, it's completely unfair. We'd like to do a whole lot more to protect people from gun violence that we see breaking out all around us, including in my neighborhood in Maryland Heights last night. And even though this doesn't go far enough, I think it's a first step in the right direction that everyone should be supporting, and my vote will be yes.
Councilman Tricus, you already had an opportunity to speak.
I have a point I'd like to make.
And I would like to see if there's other folks?
That's fine.
Would like to speak as well.
Something we learned in the committee of the whole meeting, and of course, some of the things I already knew, is that when you have legislation at the local level, it reinforces your federal laws, and it sends a message to our prosecutors that we, at the St. Louis County Council's office, expect them to prosecute these people who are domestic violence, who commit domestic violence. This awareness is a furthering of the federal law because it is an extension of that law, and it does, again, it sends a message to our prosecutors in the various municipalities, as well as in our St. Louis County and St. Louis City. And I thought, well, we're not really voting right now, anyway, so.
Two points.
Please be brief, Councilman Tricus.
Two points. One, to put Councilman Fitch's comments in context. If I wanted to, all I would have to do is walk right across the concourse to the courthouse, go up a few floors, fill out an affidavit claiming my wife beats me, and I would get a protective order. Okay? And then, subject to that protective order, she could then, if she chose to, or I could if I chose to, claim that she was violent with me, and they could seize her firearms or prosecute her for that offense. So this thing is fraught with problems, fraught with problems. Second point, this is a point for discussion, and it needs to be fully discussed before any votes taken. So I don't appreciate the chairs trying to limit discussion, and just as importantly, not allowing Councilman Fitch to inquire of the county councillor, whose job is expressly in the charter, to advise and opine this council, to this council. So I think that history shows that any time the county councillor has been asked questions from this dais, an answer has been given. So the idea that somehow we're going to cut that off or limit the councilman's ability to query the county councillor, not only is it wrong, I think it's in violation of the charter. One redirect.
You are not recognized to speak, Councilman Fitch. We're going to go ahead.
I'm not.
I'm going to make a few remarks, and then we will proceed with the vote.
Why are you afraid of discussion?
This has been on our agenda. This has been on our agenda for over six weeks now. We have had a lot of opportunity for discussion. We did hold a committee on this. For anyone who is questioning the legality of this, I suggest that you look at Kansas City's ordinance, which was passed last fall. They do a really good job outlining.
Theirs is just as flawed as this.
The state and federal reasons why we are allowed to do this.
Theirs is just as flawed as this.
Excuse me, Councilman Fitch, I am speaking right now.
I'm sorry.
And I agree with you that this does not go as far as I would like it to, and perhaps we can work together to work with our colleagues in Jefferson City and in the federal government to address that, so that we can have a stronger legislation.
Are you finished?
In the meantime, again, while I do wish this bill went further, I think that this, I am strongly of the belief that this bill helps us do two things that should be of utmost priority.
So why do you get to speak and wait?
To St. Louis County government, both helping to curb gun violence and also helping to curb intimate partner violence, giving us additional tools parallel to what happens federally. You might be interested to know that there were only 418 cases prosecuted federally between 2013 and 2017. We need to be able to do this at the local level as well, and this is all about a shared priority that we all have to keep county residents safe. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Before we vote, let the record reflect that the chair has cut off Councilman Fitch from further discussion.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Absolutely no.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on Bill 29, you have four ayes and three noes.
Bill 29 is finally passed.
Just for the record, as far as I could tell, we still live in a democracy. We're not a totalitarian state yet.
Bill number 39 introduced by Councilmember Tricus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 39. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 39, you have seven ayes.
Bill number 39 is finally passed.
Bill number 40 introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 40.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 40, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 40 is finally passed.
Bill number 41 introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 41.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 41, you have seven ayes.
Bill number 41 is finally passed.
Bill number 42 introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 42.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 42, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 42 is finally passed.
Bill number 44 introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 44.
Second.
Madam Chair. Let me speak on this. I guess I'm a little disturbed with this, the way the bill was handled. This bill came up in the Third District, and it was a Third District situation, and Councilman Fitch had some major concerns over this. This bill was taken from him and put under your name, so I want to know why, and why we want to set that precedent going forward.
I, this was something I thought carefully about. I'm aware of the courtesy that we often give to the council members pertaining to projects in their district. However, Greensfelder Park, which is what this entails, some improvements at Greensfelder, at the Green, I'm sorry, Queenie Park, Greensfelder Recreation Complex, is a regional asset that serves over 10,000 people a year. I think it's important that we continue to move forward. The concerns that Councilman Fitch had were around campaign contributions. I looked into that. I was not able to see any things that were issued, issues related to that. And we also have some laws here in county government that prevent, related to contracts, the interference with campaign contributions. And Councilman Fitch indicated that he wasn't interested in moving forward on this issue, so I decided to.
I would strongly disagree with you from the standpoint that Councilman Fitch had inquiries over this. His inquiries weren't answered by this administration. They could have been, and we could have avoided this weeks ago. He was stonewalled, and now we're taking this away from him. I think that sets a bad precedent going forward, and I hope this doesn't happen again.
Councilman Tricus.
I concur with Councilman Harder's observation, but also I think it's important to point out that the chair has opened now a very slippery slope that is going to be very hard to avoid going forward with respect to legislation respective to any given district. So I would caution you against moving for this passage. I think that at a minimum, Councilman Fitch is entitled to a committee of the whole.
Councilman Fitch.
I appreciate those comments. My question, my inquiry on this still hasn't been answered. I would absolutely move forward if somebody would just said no. There's nothing going on behind the scenes, campaign contribution-wise. This is no different than the telephone contract at the jail, where it comes up after we're already in discussion, that the chief of staff of the county executive was a former lobbyist for the company that we want to award the contract to. Are we interested in transparency or not? It's a simple yes or no question. So to take it away from me and say, you don't, you're not entitled to an answer, I think is absolutely wrong, and all it does is put us right back where we were a year ago. That's all I have to say on it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?